Good evening, everyone. It's December 4th, 2018. Calling the Town of Hingham Board Selectment Meeting to order. It was titled on the agenda. Approval of the minutes dated 27 November 2018. I'll take a motion with proof same.
So moved.
Second. On the favor, I have a comment for items not on the record. See anybody here? Get right to it. Tonight, we're going to continue with our budget review process. A little out of order. We're going to do the Bear Cove Park to accommodate Mr. Matthews. Ted, welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate you taking me out of order.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Paul.
Please.
So, in your budget books, we will jump ahead to the Bear Cove Park budget. That's on Roman numeral page nine. And as we did with the other budgets, I'll present some of the basic information on the department and then ask, in this case, Mr. Matthews to expand on the presentation that's in the budget book with regards to the functions of that. In this case, it's a board, not so much a department, but the budget. Okay.
What do you got?
Bear Cove Park Committee budget. The FY '20 department request is for $27,760, which is what I've recommended. That's a $2,169 increase or an 8.48 percent increase. If you jump ahead to page 109 in your book, you'll see the budget. And shortly thereafter is the presentation that we'll see here now. Page 113 begins the presentation.
Great. Well, this is sort of new ground for me, but excellent. The $27,000 is probably the smallest budget you're going to review tonight. It's quite a bang for the buck. We have, of course, Bear Cove Park is a wonderful area, about 500 acres along the Waymouth Back River, which is a wildlife sanctuary and a place for public recreation. It's a beautiful area of riverine shoreline. It was received from the federal government in 1971 through the Federal Lands to Parks Program. It's a former U.S. Navy ammunition depot. And to date, probably $15 million has been spent between the federal government and Hingham in cleaning up the park. The last sort of work that has been done in that regard was done this summer by the Army Corps of Engineers. They came through and from what we can see, we got a pretty good, clean bill of health. But they're going to continue to monitor the property with wells and such. The Bear Cove Park Committee is dedicated to conserving the tranquility of the salt, freshwater estuary, the wetlands, the fields, the woods, the animal and plant life, the paved roadways and woodland trails for wildlife, public education and enjoyment. Our Bear Cove Park Ranger, Scott McMillan, keeps the park clean, maintains the trails, mows the fields, plows the paved road surfaces in the winter. It's a great place. Very lucky to have those paved roadways for people to recreate during the winter months. Hingham High School's rowing program used the Back River more frequently this year for practice. And we thank you very much for your support in that effort this spring. It was a last-minute sort of effort that came together with a sort of a coordinated approach. And we really appreciate your help in that regard. The cross-country programs for various high schools use the park for practices and meets. Charities also use the park for running races. We have an annual fundraiser that we run that has actually turned into what is called the Bean Town Marathon. It was our second marathon this year. 500 people signed up. About 275 runners did a loop marathon on a Sunday morning. And 40 percent of them qualified for the Boston Marathon as a result. So that's quite a popular event now for runners who are marathoners because it's the last qualifier for the Boston Marathon. September 15th is the cutoff date. And this marathon is run generally the first week of September. So it's the last qualifier east of the Mississippi. And that's a... This year, we have initiatives to update the signage throughout the park. The signage is old. It's dated. We are... We did benefit from the trail program, the Hingham Trail Program, when they did a purchase of kiosks a couple of years ago. And we're using five kiosks to mark critical areas within the park, vernal pools, areas over vistas where the osprey are, some of the Hawkley Run where fish run, and some of the fields. So we want to maintain that and improve it. The signage and the mowing strategy is to protect the habitats during the mating season. We've got a coordinated approach to that effort now. We have one pollinator garden created in the park, the Triangle Garden, if you're familiar with it. And we are working on expanding to other areas within the park. Not beekeeping, but pollinators, growing flowers, basically, on some of the old pads where there were once buildings. We would like to do additional outdoor educational programming. We've done owls at night, tree identification in winter and the spring. We've done some moonlight adventures and some bird call ID programs. And we'd like to expand on that. So if there's folks in the audience who are skilled in that area and would like to help us, please get in touch with us. We'd like to continue to restore some of the park vistas. We'd like to update the environmental assessment of the park. There was a student who did an assessment of the park about 25 years ago. And it just needs to be brushed up and brought up to today's standards for park management. We'd like to put together... We've been working on a park management manual for future Bear Cove Park committees. We think that, you know, maintaining the roadways beside the roadways and also maintaining along the water's edge is important so we don't lose those roadways in the future as we get these persistent, consistent high tides. We had a lot of visitors to the Hingham Naval Ammunition Depot Memorabilia Museum in the Green Dock House building this year. Scott has put together an incredible display of photographs and uniforms. And I think he has every one of the different types of shells that were produced in those warehouse buildings in our Dock House building for display. And quite a few, you know, vets that were around during that period have visited from different areas. And we get groups of seniors who are interested in that to come in. And then, you know, a lot of people stop in while they're out there if it's a nice day in the park. We had... This year, we did a free summer yoga class over towards the Back River condos and sort of a triangle area there where there are colored trees. We mowed an area. And we had groups of anywhere from, say, three to 12 people at any one particular day in the park. This summer was awfully warm, and it was a little buggy down there. That's a program where we'd like to continue, but probably pull it back a little. We have a Bear Cove Park permit application process where groups can, such as 501(c)(3)'s can come in and use the park, say, for these running races. We have groups that have come in, say, three, four, five years in a row at this point. So we think for every one of those races, we probably get anywhere between 300 to 600 visitors for those races. And we probably do four or five of them a year. And along with our own race, we probably bring in 5,000 visitors to the park just for those road races. And then, you know, we're getting hundreds of people on the weekends. So we think there's probably 10,000 or more people using the park every year. We've got the odd day off-leash dog walking program, which is a great success. And then, we are formulating some ideas about how to preserve and repair Building 80, which is another one of those large warehouses. It's in the woods over by the conservatory. It's where we store our equipment and where Scott keeps the truck and the mower and everything else that we use to maintain the park. So our salary for the budget year would go to 18 through 70. We've got one full-time ranger. The expenses are $9,300, $9,390. And then, our budget has those two items for maintenance and also the $2,000 for the sort of encapsulating the dog walking program in new signage. Doggy bags, that sort of thing. I think I've got just a couple of things. So we're looking at a level-funded budget for the routine expenses. We think it'd be adequate unless we have any unusual expenses. We have a 1999 Ford F-350 truck that's in good condition that we inherited from the fire department in 2016. And we also have a John Deere lawn mower, which was transferred from the country club when its useful life was done over there. The truck has only 64,000 miles on it. So even though it's 19 years old, it should last for another five years or so. We're planning to replace the mower with a model that will allow us to control the height of some of those pads that we have out there that are... that have grown to a height that we can't control, actually, with the current mower, which was more designed for maintaining a golf course. So we're looking at spending some money out of what we call the Friends of Bear Cove Park account to cover this new piece of equipment. Do you have any questions at this point?
Well, I know it probably goes against the green initiative, but I love the fact that you're still driving a 19-year-old truck. Good. I mean, I think, as you said at the outset, this is $27,000. It works really hard for the town. I think that you can see in the repurposing of capital assets, you know, that's one way that I think we try to maintain costs at Bear Cove Park. And, you know, I think the staff, the limited staff you have, works very, very hard to maintain and provide access to the park. One question I did have was, you know, I know Leslie Badger, our animal control officers, had to spend some time in the park, you know, in terms of the rollout for the odd day off-leash dog program. I'm assuming it looks like Glenn just absorbs that cost in his budget, and she's just there making rounds in her capacity as animal control officer.
Yes. Yeah, at this point. It's part of her regular hours.
Ted, you've mentioned that you do a number of... a lot of fundraising, and you have the Friends of Bear Cove. Just as context, in a typical year, how much money does the committee raise through its fundraising?
That's a good question. This was an extraordinary year.
Okay.
We had the second marathon, which was a $6,000 contribution to the Friends account.
Wow.
And then, we did a half marathon, which was a last-minute... We had about a month to prepare. This was the one that moved from Norwell to Hingham because Norwell felt like they were running it in their streets. And the park has actually become very well-known as a great place to run. So they called us, were able to help them, and it was another $6,000 donation. We don't generally ask for the donation. It's more of a give. And some of these 501(c)(3)'s are, you know, doing it for charity.
True. Well, and I would just point out, you know, to members of the advisory committee and the audience and to the viewing audience that through those efforts, you're looking at purchasing a capital asset that might otherwise be funded with taxpayer dollars. And we appreciate that. One, you know, maybe we can talk about this offline. Just if I look at your expenses, and I know with the off-leash program, it's kind of, you know, there was a big expense in '17, and then at a certain point, the supplies go down. It looks to me like the expenses are growing by... I just did rough math. Looks like close to 30 percent. And that's both versus last year and what looks to be like the three-year run rate. I might just, you know, again, I know there are a lot of expenses with the off-leash program. I might just kind of look and see if between the line of dog expenses and miscellaneous... I don't know.
Right.
I just wonder if perhaps there might... And again, I think we're talking about like $1,000. So not big money. But we do look at all the growth rates of not just the overall budget, but the different components.
I hear you, Mary. Definitely. Back in the program, started in 2016, and we had some budgeted amount of money there. About half of that was encumbered or returned to the town at the end of the budget year. So there may be some, you know, 2,000 might be a little more than what we need.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
But at the end of the year, we may end up returning that money unused.
Sure. And I'm well aware that, you know, you and every department, you know, and I think the taxpayers should feel good in knowing that, you know, people don't spend budget dollars just because they have them.
Yeah.
All of our departments are very prudent. And if they find during the year that there are savings or the run rate is less, we don't go out and do more. Those dollars get returned to the taxpayers.
And are you going to use some of that 2,000 for signage this year?
It's going to be a combination of signage. And then, we, you know, we have expenses within Town Hall. I haven't really looked at the whole what we need at this point. But we do those threefold brochures that have a bit of expense to them. And again, we've got five gates, and each sign can run a couple hundred dollars.
Yep.
That sort of thing.
Yeah.
So it adds up.
Thank you for reminding me.
Yeah.
Yeah. I remember that was in your covenant of...
Yeah.
Thank you.
My memory is that the park was going to get an ATV in conjunction with the Alliance program. Has that come in yet?
I don't know that the money's been received yet. So that would be a question. Yeah.
So I'd have to look back at the agreement and see what the timing was. We've received the first of the three payments from Alliance on the first, when the permit was pulled. And for the main mitigation, I don't remember where the... Where in the... I don't know if you remember offhand, Emily. There was a baseball netting, field netting that was going on. There were some other things that were coming with that development. I'd have to look at the agreement to see where the... what the timing was.
When these races are done, is there vehicle traffic on the roadway in conjunction with them?
There is a... We try to control that, Paul, through the application process. It's one of the questions that comes up front. Yes, there are authorized vehicles that go into the park to help with those races. Some are vehicles, some are more like ATV-type gators that allow the race coordinators to run from one end of the park to the other. We realize that that's a sensitive thing for many people. They don't want to see motorized vehicles in the park. So we really try to keep that down to a dull roar.
Well, I mean, the reality is, the roadway system in there is 70-plus years old.
Yeah.
And it just can't stand up to any kind of sustained vehicle traffic. So I'm just wondering if there's any thought given to limiting the access into the park of real vehicles?
There is. We have our own truck, of course. And Leslie, who runs her truck through there... The roads are original. They were built to carry heavy equipment. So they're not in awful condition. They certainly are getting old. So yeah, that definitely is something that we could focus on and do a better job making sure.
All right. Thanks for coming in.
All right.
Thanks so much, Ted.
All right. Have a good night.
You too. Okay, returning to the assessor's budget is next. That is on Roman numeral page eight. So we welcome Rick Nolan, the Director of Assessing.
Hey, Rick. Good evening.
His 2020 department request for the assessing department was $327,582 with an additional recommendation of $19,000, which I'll let him explain in his presentation. I've recommended all requested amounts for a total of $346,582, an increase of $3,476 or a 1.01 percent increase. The budget is on page 38. With the presentation following on page 43. Oh, the right there. There you go. The left one will go backwards, Paul.
Okay. Good evening again. My glasses broke.
You're on the same page.
Missions and services. Pretty much everything we do in compliance with state law and the Department of Revenue. We attempt to fairly and adequately deferment and assess all real estate and personal property at its full and fair market value as of January 1st of each year for taxation purposes and compliance with state law. We maintain and administer all property tax data and mapping records. We administer valuations of motor vehicle and boat excise taxes. We administer personal and motor vehicle tax abatements, abetments, and statutory tax exemptions. We implement the policy decisions and directions of the Board of Assessors. Benchmarks and metrics. There are approximately 8,700 real estate accounts with an assessed value of over $7 billion. We assess approximately 358 personal property accounts with an assessed value of over $103 million. We administer excise tax for 24,600 motor vehicles and 1,370 boats. We had a good deal last year. We only processed 67 abatement applications, and we processed 200 exemption applications. On the right, you'll see just showing the annual assessment for the personal property and the real property and the number of boats and motor vehicles. Key initiatives. We just upgraded our software system with Vision. The conversion went well, I would say. Steve Becker can attest to that. It went a lot better than we thought. There are still some kinks in the system, which we're working out right now. We did receive training on the new system last week. We'd also... I'll talk more on the figures later. But we'd like to hire a part-time data quality inspector for fiscal '20 to allow greater control of the quality and frequency of inspections. I've been doing some in-house, and I have some subcontractors, and we also use Vision. But it's been more difficult to get Vision to help out. They're so busy right now. When I started with the town, there were a full-time inspector and a part-time inspector, and we don't have anybody right now. Something we've talked about with zoning. We'd like to interface zoning information with Vision. This is a goal. We've been talking about it for a while, but that's what we hope to do this year. We have to continue the cyclical inspections that comply with mass government guidelines. They say they'd like us to see every property in town at least once every nine years. So it's an ongoing process. And we want to continue education and training of the staff and board members to best serve the public and meet the OR requirements. New member, Al Chambers, just completed the course, the MALE course. And Erin Washington should be getting her MAA designation shortly. And Maureen Carlson is probably going to get hers next year. So we try to encourage everybody on staff to get as much education as possible. Salaries and expenses. The budget amount was $262,069 for the salaries. If accepted, it would be $281,69. We have the three full-time personnel and one-time assessing technician, and then we have the three board members. Expenses are $84,513. And major items was $48,000 for the revaluation and $6,000 for mapping. We'd like to transfer our $19,000 from expenses for reval to salaries to hire the part-time inspector. For fiscal '10, as I mentioned, we had one full-time and one part-time inspector. In consideration of converting to the new Vision camera system at that point, the board agreed to eliminate the inspector positions and outsource the majority of the inspections to Vision. Over the past few years, it's been more difficult to utilize Vision inspectors when needed. To around this, we have used independent contractors to help. Utilizing a 16-hour a week work week, the department estimates an in-house inspector could inspect approximately 1,500 properties per year. The cost of using the Vision for the same amount would be approximately $30,000 annually. Given the uncertain nature of the economy, we propose offsetting the additional requests by transferring $19,000 from the revaluation account to the payroll account. So there's a no-net increase to the town. An in-house inspector would result in savings to the town and would benefit the office in that they would be more familiar with the areas of the town and local properties. Any questions?
Can you remind me, Rick? I know the revaluation line item changes from year to year. Is that because of the number of properties?
No, it's the three-year... It was three-year previously. It's going to be five-year now.
Okay.
So that's always been an issue where we have that one year.
Smoothing...
Yeah. The good thing is, it's going to be every five. So it won't be hit quite as hard as it has in the past.
Okay. So the 48-year budgeting this year for reval is...
That's for Vision, for their... For them to do the interim, for RRC to do the personal property interim, and the majority of the permit inspections and any other inspections we can get for it.
Okay. And then, the additional inspection cost that you're sort of balancing out with the ask for the salary, that would be in addition to this 48,000, whatever's built in for Vision.
It was 67, so it'll be 48.
Okay. I think that's all I got.
So just, Rick, in terms of the budget, because I... So if I look on your budget page on page 38, the reval services line has $48,000. So that is net of the $19,000 that shifted.
Right.
Again, I just... I know we have advisory committee members in the room. I think what Rick is proposing is to fund something within his budget. So if that $19,000 request were to go away, that reval line, we would see increasing by 19,000. So, you know, we're categorizing that 19... So, you know, we're categorizing that 19 as sort of an additional request, but I just think we need to sort of follow the money because the activity is going to take place.
Where was the new position I felt needed to highlight as a new addition, but you're absolutely right.
I appreciate that. Yeah.
Yeah. Rick, I don't have any questions. You know, just looking in particular, you know, the chart with the benchmarks and the metrics, it's always just surprising to me, you know, the volume of transactions and the assessments that have to take place in administering the excise tax. I mean, if you break these numbers down by week and you think that, you know, there's a team of four people that's handling this volume of work, it's really something. Thank you.
And I just also want to thank you for all your work in helping the group in thinking through the targeted tax relief efforts, which I promised to return to.
I have a question on the assessments. When somebody does a kitchen renovation, does the Board of Assessors come in and give the house a look over, or how's that called?
We, depends. If we just say we were there last year or two years ago, and all they did was do some updates, we would not probably go in. We'd probably just do a quick drive-by. But if we hadn't been there in seven or eight years, then we probably would try to get into the house or at least make the attempt.
What about the units down at the shipyard? I mean, do you look at one and make an assessment as to one and then just multiply it by the number of units?
Like Brio, the new one, right now it's...
Avalon.
Okay. Well, Avalon is, they're apartments. They're going to be based on the number of units and eventually the income coming in, but right now it'll be based on the size and the number of units. But Brio, where the condos, or they will be condos, will be assessed based on the sales price and the size of the unit, because those are condos, a little bit different.
And they get into that seven-year cycle?
They do. They do. Yeah. Condos not quite as important because, like you said, a lot of them are the same or very similar. Hingham Woods, like you have four different styles. So we handle like each complex of its own neighborhood. So we don't look at them on, I would say, as cyclically as we do the other ones, right? As a single family or a two-family.
And these people that come in to do these assessments, how are they identified to the public?
They have letters from us. They have badges. They have identification. If they work for Vision, Vision has a couple of different IDs, one from us, and they also have their own. They have it right on their car. We bought magnets to put them on our cars, so, and it's worked, I think, pretty well. So when we're driving into, especially a house in the back of the, in the woods somewhere, and all of a sudden they see the assessors, they're probably more comfortable than some strange car driving back there. But we try to be very careful, that type of thing, too. Like, we looked at one today. It wasn't in the woods, but it was, she probably was 20 or 25, but she wasn't the owner, so we pretty much told her who we are and we walked away, because we didn't want to, you know, intrude on the parents with a young kid there, something like that.
Do you give advance notice?
We don't. I was talking to another, some, a lot of towns don't, some do. What we do is when we're doing cyclos, we will put on the website. We'll say we're going to be working on Rockland Street, Cannonbury, and whatever in the next week or so. But with the permits, we typically don't. Most of them are expecting us there, and if we get in there early enough, we're usually dealing with builders or contractors, so. But we try to be careful, and we try not to, we try to be considerate of everybody. But that has been a discussion, should we send out notices? But, you know, it's certain advantages in some ways and others it's not, so, yeah.
Well, thank you very much for the work you're doing.
Thank you.
We haven't had any complaints, so.
That's good. That's a good thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Treasurer? We have a treasurer. Hi, Jean.
Hi, Jean.
You're welcome. Treasurer Collector Jean Montgomery joins us. On page Roman numeral eight is the budget summary for the Treasurer Collector's office. Jean is requesting for the FY '20, FY '20, $406,842, and I am recommending same. That's a $3,915 increase or a 0.97% increase. Her budget is on page forty-nine, with the presentation beginning on page fifty-two.
Right into the PowerPoint? Questions later? Okay. So we were asked to do a little PowerPoint presentation to kind of, I guess, substantiate the budget a little bit and just give you some flavor as to what our department does during the year, a little bit more than you get usually. So the Treasurer Collector's office is actually two offices, so we'll focus first a little Let's go in the right direction here, Jean. No? Okay. So we'll, I'm going to focus first a little bit on just the treasurer's side, and then we'll flip over to the collector's side, because we have two hats here. So the Treasurer Collector, the missions and services of the treasurer, the bullet points pretty much hit it. We are, like most municipal departments, highly regulated by the Mass General laws. The treasurer is your cash manager. We are responsible for the deposit, the disbursement, and the investment of all the funds that go through the town. Just to give you an idea or some perspective of that, in FY '18, the receipts that went through the department were around $175 million. Disbursements were $160 million, and those disbursements are your vendor warrants and your payroll warrants that the Board of Selectmen authorize weekly. And at the close of the Treasury on June 30th, your Treasury bank balance was around $99.8 million. So that's a lot of money. You know, we're basically your bank. All the money goes through that department. And part of the responsibility is the deposit, the disbursement, and probably what people might find a little more interesting, but it's actually rather limited, would be the investment of those funds. So we have, basically, your, all that money falls into, for investment purposes, into two categories. A large chunk of the bank balance at the end of every month are made up of your trust funds, your stabilization accounts, meals tax stabilization, OPEB. And those funds are invested under one statute where we can put it in money market accounts, CDs, or we can invest in securities, and they can go out for investments for longer terms. So you might have market fluctuations and valuations if any of your departments have those types of accounts and you see your interest going up and down. That could be market fluctuation playing in. The other main portion is your, what we call idle cash, and I'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. I'm going to do a little more on investment, because basically, a lot of what we do in the department's kind of boring, so we'll just fly through what it is and then go back and talk a bit about investment of idle cash. One of the other main functions of your treasurer is debt issuance. I think we all know kind of a lot about that, because we're here talking about debt, and each time we go out for a bond or a ban, we're here and we get a little bit of a tutorial on that, so we'll kind of slide through that today. Your treasurer is also your custodian of your tax lien deeds. Tax liens, in the initiation of the foreclosure process, is actually the collector's side, and so the collector will place a tax lien, and then your treasurer's side of you manages those tax liens. We currently have 45 parcels of our 8,700 or whatever Rick put in as real estate parcels in with tax liens on them, so those are fairly delinquent accounts. They're in various stages of foreclosure. At the two extremes of how we handle those, we have, currently have 13 parcels that are active foreclosure cases in land court, so they've moved ahead. I have about six people who are working on active payment plans, and they're trying to redeem it. So there's your two ends. Come in and try to get out of trouble. Don't come in and go to land court. In the middle, we have another 26 properties or so that probably heading to land court, but they're on a priority list as we clear up cases in land court through foreclosure or redemption, we'll move another case in. Land court can, it's expensive, so we do it in stages.
Do you have a particular lawyer that you use?
We use John Finnegan, who also does bankruptcy work for the town, and he works for Hill Law. John's been our tax title attorney for a long time. The treasurer also, as an alternative to full land court foreclosure with delinquencies, a treasurer can use the state mandated land of low value auction process, which is an alternative to a full expensive lengthy land court foreclosure, and it enables the town to resolve tax liens without incurring costly and lengthy process. In FY '16, this was on my bucket list. We don't do a lot of these. We conducted two land of low value auctions, and we were, for 17 parcels that fell in an assessment range of, say, below $20,000. They've been hanging around for a long time. 10 of those parcels were sold to a butters, so they were returned to the tax rolls, and the other seven, nobody was interested. They churn over. They are now under the custodianship. They get added to the Board of Selectmen's tax possessions. So they become part of what you look at for repurposing. So that's, that was also done. So that's kind of the bulk of where your treasurer's attention and activity goes. For benchmarking, on the treasurer's side, I thought you might, we might look at the investment of idle cash. And idle cash is basically the money that's in the town's treasury that isn't immediately necessary for operating expenses, so your day-to-day operations, and it's also outside of that trust fund bucket we talked about. So what I did is took a snapshot of a cash flow that I do, and just, this is FY '18, and the first column there, I don't know if there's any light on this, it shows you the bank balance in the Treasury at the end of each month in fiscal 2018. Of that, so for example, in July of 2017, we had a $94 million bank balance in the Treasury. About $45 million of that was available. Part of that is your, you know, your fund balance that you have. And we earned through the investment options that we have available, $33-plus thousand on that available idle cash. So if you go down, you'll see, you scan down, in FY '18, we had earnings, which is good news, of almost $700,000 on idle cash. So this, you know, a treasurer has the responsibility of investing idle cash and at the highest rates they can, considering safety first, liquidity in yield last. And this is primarily done through certificates of deposit that have a maturity date of less than two years, or money market accounts, or the state's pooled fund at the Mass Municipal Depository Trust, which most of our money is. I'd love to take credit for the $700,000, but interest rates are just about better. So for...
Just like you predicted, Jean. Just like you predicted.
The Selectmen will know that for many, since 2008, we've probably been forecasting flat, maybe zero, in your budget for expected revenue on interest earnings. And in fiscal '17, things looked a little better. We had interest earnings on idle cash of almost $300,000. A year later, you're looking at $700,000. So that's quite a large percentage increase. It's almost $400,000 more between year to year. I would keep it flat, though, going forward, because the interest rates are now leveling out.
Next page speaks to the rates.
So I did, yes, I did throw this. This is basically an MMDT chart, just to show you some of the volatility of that interest rate. So where we are now, way at the end in October, we're at like 2.4%, and we're kind of leveling out. You'll see, the last time we were at that level was back in 2008, when things, I know, went bad. But in 2008, we were at 2.4%, and we were coming down from a high of 5, 4, 3. We were coming out of a good period and down. This time, we're coming out of a bad period, and we're going up and leveling out. So I'm trying to look at that and not see it as a predictor of down again. But the interest rates are better.
Yeah. I would just say that I think these two slides illustrate the reason why we tend to be conservative when we're forecasting this element of local receipts, because as soon as we put that money into services, you know, as we're seeing in the budget, 80% of our budget are personnel expenses. So, you know, when we're hiring somebody, we're looking to make sure that we have a consistent income stream, and with this one in particular, it's so much a function of market forces that we don't want to be back in the situation we were in in 2008, where we were, you know, we were looking at the possibility of having to reduce personnel, because these local receipts and others, you know, they froze up pretty quickly.
It's one time after the fact, revenue, I think is how you probably would view it, because I certainly couldn't, I, we always say you don't have a crystal ball, so we don't know what next year is going to bring. But that is, lots of people will say, with that amount of money, boy, what I could do with it. And so I think the message that I would like to give to people out there, we're in a big financial community, is there are lots of restrictions on what we can actually do with idle cash and how we can invest it, and it is very restrictive and very safe. So that's what we're doing. So on the collector's side, I think collector's side is a little more well-known. Everybody knows the tax collector. We, our statistics are in line with what you heard from the assessors, where the other side of the assessment, where the collection end of it. In FY '18, we billed out and collected on invoices of $70,000, almost $71,000 invoices. We have a bit more invoices than you see on the assessors' records, because we also follow up with demands and warrants and so forth. So we have more invoices to send out to collect for the same amount of properties or bills that they generate. We have some values there next with. The tax collector also issues municipal lien certificates, which are tax clearance certificates for conveyances and refinances. We do about 850 of those a year, and we bring in probably about $28,000 in revenue to the general fund with the generation of those certificates. And the, back to the tax lien, we said before, the tax collector actually does the collection of taxes, so the tax collection side places the liens before they go over to the treasurer's side. And just as a note, and I think everybody realizes this, the taxes provided, in FY '17, they provided for 76% of the operating budget of the town. For the benchmarks, on the collector's side, we strive to maintain a collection rate of better than 97% by fiscal year end, and this is just to illustrate that we have been achieving that. Generally, we're closer to 99% by fiscal year end. This is a good, this is a good town. It was a strong, strong collection, strong taxpayers. Let's give the credit to the taxpayers. Key initiatives. We initiated back in, let me check my notes on this, I think it was 2000, we started in January, or in fiscal '18, we initiated a new cash management system for the accounting of what we call miscellaneous receipts. It's non-tax revenue, which may range around $20 million a year, and we went live with this system in January of 2018. It's working very well, but a year into it, we're now, the next step on this is we're over conversion, and we're really working on trying to become experts at using the system. Basically, we have moved from an accounting system that was all Excel spreadsheets and manual reporting and many sided entries to a database system. So this was approved through the capital budget for fiscal '18. That's moving along, and we're going to continue on that. One of the things we are involved in a lot interdepartmentally is working with other departments on the collection of online. Everybody is interested in online payment and how their departments can get involved with that, so we continue to work with them. The Harvard Masters is looking at a new program. We work with recreation. You have your permitting offices are using the permidize and so forth. I think just about everybody's working with online now. And this whole Zobrio management system that I talked about is actually a facilitator in a treasurer's office's ability to reconcile this different type of receipt of revenue that comes into the bank first, rather than it coming from the departments into our office. So it's all part of that. Another initiative is just to continue to explore tax relief options with the Board of Selectmen, the assessors, and elder services. And we have the, just the water, possible water company enterprise fund on our mind if the town does decide to acquire the water company. It would be a cash management responsibility of the treasurer's office. As for the budget, as Tom gave the overview, our salaries are budgeted $350,050. We have four full-time personnel. One is the treasurer collector. We have the assistant treasurer collector, Laurie Magna. treasurer collector, Laurie Magna, who does the bulk of the current year's tax production and collections. We have the revenue receipts administrator, who Nancy Leahy, who handles inter-departmental turnovers and miscellaneous receipts. And we have a full-time tax receipt clerk and two part-time tax receipt clerks, because that's where the bulk of the, the tax collection activity goes on in the department. Our expenses are in at $46,792. Our major items will come as no surprise, $25,922 for postage, which postage would be, 14,000 of that would be just for tax bills alone. We also, all the payroll and the vendor warrants that are produced by the, the checks through the town accountant's office come down to the treasurer's office for mailing, tracking, and that's another $9,000. And our office also manages the postage, the mailroom and the postage machine, and we foot the cost for maintenance of that machine, so that's the other, the remainder of our budget. The other big ticket item is the printing, our printing budget, which is at $10,500 is for our tax bills alone, so tax bill is the big money eater up in our department. And we have a $10,000 budget for tax title, which is the only line item in our tax title budget, and that's for land court foreclosure costs and redemptions.
And you try to manage to that $10,000, the way you were-
We, we do try to manage within the $10,000, and we are able to roll that over. If a tax, if a treasurer needs more than the $10,000 tax title budget, it is one of the items like snow and ice that can get added on to the rate recap, but we try not, we don't like to do that. So that's why we have that middle bunch of properties that are in a waiting line to go into tax title. But we don't overload the attorney costs in any one particular year.
Is, is the effort with respect to negotiation measured in terms of time to repay, or the amount?
For people on payment plans?
Yeah.
There's the state statute for how a payment plan should be structured, which is very, very heavy. And then there's the plan that your tax collector will probably work on, which is usually, we try to balance it between what you need to pay to get out of the problem and what can you really pay.
Are you the decider?
Yes.
The exclusive decider?
I am the exclusive decider. So people come in and talk to me, and we, we try to work out something that's, that people can do. I'm interested in people actually redeeming their properties.
Sure.
All of us, we don't want the properties, we want-
Sure.
-out of the problem, so. And we, people will come in, and lots of times we will find other ways to, to assist them. It's a very bad position to be in, when people are in that and they don't like to take that step, and when they come in, we can talk about a lot of things, you know, are you a veteran? Do you have any, can, is there any assistance there? You know, what is your age? What is, is the hardship, is it temporary? Let's see about assessment, what about exemptions? So we can tie together a package for them. Maybe they need to be deferring going forward and we need to do the plan for back taxes. So the, we encourage people to, if you're in that boat, to come in and talk to us.
And isn't one of the tax relief items on our plate right now, a reduction in the, the interest charge on certain of those delinquent accounts? Wasn't there a change in the state law that would allow us to reduce that interest?
It is, it's for the hardship deferral program, which the, the interest rates for elderly deferral is a 1% simple interest, 2% this year, I believe, it's variable based on the economy, or the, what we could borrow at. And the hardship deferral, which is a little different program, is still at the 8%, it kind of got left behind during some municipal modernization enhancements that were done a few years. And we are, I think the selectmen are entertaining, perhaps recommending that that all be done at the same, more advantageous for elderly.
We now at least will have the option under state law to, to consider a change in that hardship interest rate, which seems like if you're in a hardship, the last thing you need is a higher interest rate. Jean, you know, I've really been enjoying working with you on the, on the tax relief program. I owe you some comments, and I, I know that's on my plate. And I also want to point out again, your, your slide with the 99% tax payment and tax collection, you know, to, to the folks out there, that's one of the main drivers, or the main driver, of us being able to maintain our AAA credit rating. You know, if you don't pay your bills, you know, everything else that we do, you know, can't measure up to that. So the fact that you're, you're committed to those obligations makes that work for us. And I hope that you're seeing through this process that we're trying to work for you, so that every dollar you're sending in, we're working hard to deploy efficiently and effectively. And, you know, Jean, for this $406,000 budget, you know, you and your staff work very hard for the town.
I'd echo that as well, thank you very much, I enjoyed your presentation.
I would just add, in, in addition to all these things that Jean does, she also, her office administers the scholarship fund for the town. And I, I want to thank you for helping, helping me earlier this year in, in getting some information about, about a scholarship. And at, at the end of last year, I believe, Hingham High School seniors were awarded a total of $350,000 in scholarships, and that's through the generosity of many scholarship funds that are set up, and also Jean and the scholarships committee's stewardship of those assets. I, I would just make one other point, because, you know, sometimes we, we forget about things that happened in the past. Jean's position used to be an elected position. It was only, what, Jean, five, six years ago?
Yes.
That it became an appointed position. So think about this. Anybody could get 50 signatures to get on the ballot, get your friends to vote, and you would be responsible for $98 million in idle cash and collecting and working with our fellow citizens who are in a period of misfortune. And I, I think, you know, and ironically, the, the treasurer collector position was appointed, and I think it took three tries at town meeting, if I'm not mistaken. And I, you know, when I look at, when I look at the scope of the responsibilities, the amount of the assets that are under management, the fact that you're often interfacing with citizens at a very vulnerable time, and you're also representing Hingham to the investment Good move, town meeting, on making this an appointed position, because this is just such important work, and grateful to you and your team.
And I think one of the crucial points that came out of those discussions was exactly what Paul raised, and that was that the discretion to work with taxpayers remain in the treasurer collector office and not become politicized by involvement of this board. So we've hired a professional, we have a professional, that's part of the, the job of the treasurer collector, and so, you know, that's where that responsibility lies and, and not here. And that was a really important piece, I think, to maintain with Jean, I think, in being ultimately successful and having town meeting approve that request.
I'd like to thank the treasurer's office for the fund it maintains for the Flag for Soldiers campaign, too. You were a great help on that, I really appreciate it. I'd also like to thank the taxpayers for paying their tax bills.
We wouldn't be sitting here.
I'll take that for granted.
I thank them, too. You make us laugh.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks, Jean.
One of my colleagues has another obligation, so she will be upsetting herself, but before she does, she'd like to say a few words.
Sorry, I just have a, a few, a few quick announcements, and hopefully I don't get nicked on my salary for leaving early tonight, but um-
You're covered.
On, on Sunday, and I see some other folks, on Sunday, on Saturday, I see some other folks in the room for the advisory committee that were there as well. The, the school committee put on their long-range planning group walkthrough at Plymouth River School. It was great to spend some time in that physical plant. And I kept saying, John, John Ferris is a glasses-half-full guy. Every time we turned a corner, he's like, this is beautiful. And I was like, that's right, John, it is beautiful. But it was really, it was a great turnout of advisory, school committee, and I was there on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, so I appreciate that. It's, it's nice to go and see, I think, some of the capital assets that we are the stewards of, so I appreciate that. I want to give a shout-out to what I'll call the Tony Viola Volunteers on Saturday. There were about 117, mostly dads and boys, out raking up the yards of folks in need in Hingham, doing spring cleanup. And those guys worked all day, and, you know, I think people are very grateful for that sort of behind-the-scenes volunteerism, and, and I applaud Tony for getting it organized, and I applaud all the, the folks for being out there to contribute to people who could use a little bit of help. I also want to thank the Hingham High School Veterans Appreciation Club. They filled 150 Christmas gift bags over the weekend. Those gift bags will be distributed here in Hingham and were taken into the New England Center for Veterans in Boston by the Hingham High School football alums, boosters and Hingham youth football. So again, just, you know, this is one of those times of year, I think, that you look around and folks in Hingham are constantly giving back, and that was another example of that. And I think that with that, I will bid you both goodnight and leave these other budgets in your capable hands.
See you Thursday.
See you Thursday. Thanks, everybody.
We're going to be meeting on Thursday night as well, in case anybody wants to.
That's right.
Spend away.
Got it now. I may take advantage of that.
Well, Stephen, I'm welcome.
Steve Becker.
Keeps our websites up to speed.
Steve Becker's our IT director. His budget is summarized on page roman numeral eight. Steve, do you need some cues on how to use that? Or you go. Does anybody know?
Oh man, if you do, we're in trouble.
All right, so Steve has requested a total departmental request of $424,660. He has an additional request of $23,975, which again, I'll let him explain in his presentation. I am recommending all of those requests for a total of $47,382 increase, or an 11.81% increase over last year. The budget is on page 28, followed closely by the presentation. On page 32.
I'll try not to bore you with some of these numbers. So what we do in information technology, we provide technology services to all the departments except for the Hingham Light Plant, and that's across 16 buildings, 16 locations in town. We're responsible for implementing and monitoring cybersecurity defenses, that includes web content filtering, spam filtering, endpoint antivirus, firewall, cybersecurity assessment and mitigation. We're responsible for over 300 user accounts, 36 servers, 2 EMC sands, 280 end-user devices, 100 printers, and other devices, pretty much anything that touches the network. We're responsible for the phone system, which includes one voice server, 30 voice switches across all municipal locations, and 750 telephones. We provide procurement, configuration, deployment, maintenance, removal, disposal of all technology, hardware and software. Responsible for the administration of three websites and 11 social media accounts. Projects within the last 12 months included IP security cameras in the town hall, Munis Financial's database upgrade, Munis employee self-services upgrade, antivirus service upgrades at town hall and library, cybersecurity assessment and mitigation, which is ongoing, web security gateway upgrade, which is basically a web filter, that's ongoing as well. Migration of uplinks between municipal locations from 1 gigabit to 10 gigabits, ongoing as well. Tyler Content Manager Document Management System, which is part of the Munis Financial's, along with Tyler Dashboard, that one's ongoing. And we recently enhanced our backup by moving it to the cloud as well, so we not only back up onsite, but we back up to the cloud as redundancy. Benchmarks and metrics. Oops, move on. In a 12-month period, from October 1st of 2017 to September 30th of 2018, 1,392 help desk calls, 111 toner request calls, six-
Toner request call.
Basically, anybody that runs out of toner, we have to order it.
Oh, like a printing toner cartridge?
Yes, correct. And 628 other calls that actually didn't go to the help desk.
I might be a few of those, sorry.
I'm a few of those.
It might be, you know, a user is, resigns or is terminated, and we need to disable accounts, or we need to create new user accounts for anybody that's been hired, quarantined emails, website postings, requests for presentation equipment, et cetera.
That's where it resets.
Yeah, there you go. I need to talk to you about that. So all in all, it averages out to about eight and a half calls per day. And what that doesn't include is ongoing projects, which I mentioned prior to that, budgeting, procurement, documentation, deployment of desktops, printers, the disposal of surplus equipment, destruction of hard drives, infrastructure maintenance and upgrades, security maintenance. So as you can see, we keep busy.
One of the things that I've talked to my friend over here about is putting these meetings on the website, link to the different departments. So I don't know if that's on the list in some form, but-
We-
Well, I got you here.
We have discussed that a bit, and I could discuss it with you offline if you'd like. Some of the key initiatives going forward. Town hall security cameras, phase two, we're going to be installing security cameras on the outside of the building. Security cameras at the public library. We have a web security, web filter upgrade. Town hall firewall, which we actually just completed that about a week ago. Cybersecurity assessment mitigation is ongoing, and the reason why that's still ongoing, and that will take a while, is because of the testing involved. We have to roll it out slowly to different levels of departments first. First, we have to test it out, and then we have to start rolling it out to departments. And usually, the departments we know that won't be affected as much, usually, selectmen, treasurer collectors, you know, police department, fire department, they're usually the last on the list. So Tyler Munis Dashboard, that's a web-based version of Munis Financial's. Vision appraisal upgrade, which was just completed as well. And we're doing Cisco Network switch upgrades in different locations. Also doing exchange DKIM DMARC, without boring too many people. It's basically a way of authenticating that email originated from our domain, and that it's not spam. We're going to be moving telecommunications T1s, our phone lines, to a different provider. We're going to be doing domain controller upgrades for both the town hall and library. And the building links, the closet-to-closet links, and the links between the different municipal buildings, we'll be upgrading them to 10 gigabits.
We don't have any people in closets, Paul, don't worry.
You can send bigger emails, is that the deal?
Pardon me?
You can send bigger emails?
Um-
Is that the deal?
No, that's, that's, we could. The problem with that is it gets into additional storage resources, and most other servers probably wouldn't accept it. Even if we could send it, they may not accept it because of the size of the files.
Is that you, Steve, or?
I think so. As far as budget, salaries, they're 227,333, but a portion of that is reimbursed by the school department. The school department reimburses the, for 20% of the IT's salary, which equals $45,460- School Department reimburses the, for 20% of the IT's salary, which equals $45,467, and my request is for $181,866. That includes myself, Systems Analyst Kate Richardson, who you all know, and Joe Lindsay, who's the network technician. Expenses are $242,794. Most of the increase has come from the service and support agreements. That has increased approximately $18,000 over last year, and $7,000 is due to vision appraisal software going cloud-based. Additional $2,000 from Munis Financial's, they typically go up about 5% a year. And our warranty has expired on our EMC storage area network, so that support contract will be coming up this next fiscal year. Additional requests, we're asking for an additional $23,975 for the network technician position to go from part-time to full-time due to the, just the ongoing workload increase on all aspects, which has been really overtaxed as far as the resources. We're unable to do a lot of, you know, normal maintenance that we should be doing, and would like to resolve that.
So I just have a couple of things to add. So Steve is regularly before the department head meetings with security warnings and training and information that's, you know, common, common problems people are seeing and making sure that we're all aware of it as a staff to keep the network safe. And the other thing I wanted to point out is, he spoke earlier about cybersecurity assessments, et cetera. Some of that was done with a grant that we received from the state last year through the, you know...
The Community Compact.
Community Compact, that's right. Through the Lieutenant Governor, so that was a good program. And we've got some best practices that we provided back to the state that now they're using elsewhere in different communities. So it's a good program.
Yeah, and, you know, I would just add that in a lot of cases, as we're looking at, as we're looking at adding resources, it's not unusual to, you know, try to start out and maybe do a part-time position to kind of get a sense of, you know, are we meeting the service needs? But also, what it does is, just in terms of the budget, it's, I think it's a little bit easier to sometimes fund something part-time. I remember last year kind of having this conversation, and I, I keep my budget book and I look back on the notes from the previous year's budget, and there was discussion last year that, you know, I think we said at that time, this could easily be a full-time position, but we're starting out part-time. So I think this is, this is sort of a two-year effort. And, you know, I would, I would just thank you and your team for being responsive, staying current on things. The service agreements, in a lot of ways, we, they, that's an uncontrollable part of the budget, if you, if you, you know, and, and I think as we look at it, that's probably the fastest, the fastest-growing cost in your budget over the last couple of years. And, but, but again, just really appreciate all the great work you do, your professionalism, and mostly your patience, especially for those of us who often find themselves calling about the same question they may have called you about a few months before.
We've all been that.
I appreciate your patience with all of us.
I think IT guys have to be patient with ordinary people, such as myself. I echo those sentiments, and I think you, you do a great job, I really do, I mean that. I have to deal with my own network, and I can well understand and appreciate what you're saying here on a bigger scale.
I should just mention too, and, you know, we've had some additional requests tonight, I think we had a few the other night, just for, for the purposes of the audience, we're, as we're hearing these budgets, this, we have a town administrator recommended budget, we have what the department heads have submitted. It's been our board's practice to not take any recommendations or take any votes on budgets until we've had a chance to hear them all, to understand the totality of the requests. So, you know, Tom is going to kind of let us know, but I think it'll be sometime in January, at the earliest, that this board would vote a recommended budget for the advisory committee's consideration. So this is mostly presentation right now, a lot of internalizing votes to come.
I just have one other quick story to regale you all with, is I've been in a community, so communities, municipal governments, are service organizations, and that service is almost completely reliant on the IT infrastructure, just is, with the exception of some of the public safety of work. But for the most part, it's, it's very reliant on IT structure. I've been in a community where that's all been shut down because of viruses and the like, for a week or two. It's crippling. It's crippling to the community and the services that they receive, and to the staff's ability to provide them. So, you know, it can't be, it can't be overstated the importance of what Steve and his team do on a daily basis. So, thank you.
Thanks for coming in, Steve.
And I couldn't do it without Kate and Joe, that's for sure. So, thank you for acknowledging.
Thank you.
All right.
Lonnie.
Four down, free to go. Now we're getting to the second floor.
Hi, Lonnie.
One of my favorites.
Hi. We all need to go outside and hug a tree now, just as a refresher and energizer.
Are we going on a field trip?
So Lonnie Fornier, as you know, is our Conservation Commission, or, excuse me, Conservation Agent.
Yes, and GIS.
And the head of the Conservation Department for the town. Their budget is located on Roman numeral page nine. So I'm just going to preface this conversation with an explanation. So this budget, the next one, through land use and development, formally zoning, and then, of course, the community planning, that used to all be under the same, the same heading of community planning. This year, due to some operational restructuring and repurposing of, of the staff and goals and whatnot, we've necessarily had to split that group out into their own individual budgets. So this is the first time that Lonnie and Emily will be before us with a, with a budget request. It's old hat to Mary, however, she'll have a smaller number this year. So we're going to start with Conservation and work our way through the, just so you know, as a quick summary, the other two departments that used to be under community planning, building, and historic, are in different groups, so we'll, we'll see them down the road. Okay, so again, Roman numeral nine for the Conservation Commission. Lonnie's request for the FY 2020 budget was $192,065, with an additional request of $10,000, which I have forwarded, for a total recommendation of $202,065. With, it shows an increase of $202,065, but that's because she didn't exist last year, so, as her own budget, so. Okay, why don't we go on to the presentation, which begins, the budget is on page 77, and again, shortly thereafter is the presentation. Page 87 begins the presentation.
Thank you for having me tonight and giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of my team. Day-to-day, our primary responsibilities are driven by wetlands permitting in compliance with the State Wetlands Protection Act and our local Wetlands Protection Bylaw, permitting for work additions, septic system replacements, any sort of ground disturbance in a residential or commercial area that's in close proximity to a water resource. That keeps us busy and is the driver of our daily workload, to be completely honest. In addition to that, we answer citizen inquiries. It's a large variety of calls, ranging from real estate agents who want to know what's possible with this potential sale of a home, to concerns about violations and complaints, to anything nature-related. There's a squirrel in my attic, what do I do? We have gotten that call, so all things nature come to my office. It keeps it interesting, for sure. We also have, the commission owns a large number of lands in town, and it falls to my team and our great volunteers, as well as the DPW, to keep those lands in good shape. I'll get into a little bit later, the acreage that we have, but it is important to note that they have a variety of maintenance needs. Some of them are strictly wetlands, and they do their job, they last as forested space perfectly well on their own, but others are active recreation areas with trails and such that need to be maintained. We also are responsible for managing the commission's hunting program. We have a spring turkey and a fall deer season, this is archery only. We are responsible for issuing the permits, tracking the progress of the permitted hunters through the season, as well as coordinating with local, state, and, local and state officials, the EPO, Division of Fisheries and Wildlife, and the Hingham Police Department regarding those activities in the spring and fall. That piggybacks on another key portion of our work, which is to coordinate with other entities in town. Another good example of a project that we were involved in is the Army Corps' work at Bear Cove Park over the last year or so, a lot of coordination with the Army Corps itself, our neighboring towns, state officials, DEP, that kind of thing. And finally, probably my favorite thing, but not something that I have a lot of time to do, is providing GIS and other mapping support to town. Why are you snickering?
Because I love GIS too. I get the point.
I love GIS, I love mapping. I have been getting more and more familiar with the People GIS system, which is what is, it's available to the public from the town's website, but we also have some internal staffing sites that I've been updating, and I have GIS software that I also really enjoy playing with. So, moving on to the next slide. For benchmarks and metrics, one, one piece of information that stood out that was chartable for us was our applications. And there's some key points about this slide. The first one, so you have applications on the left and estimated revenue on the right. They are measured in different years. So applications are a calendar year format, and estimated revenue is typically measured in fiscal year format. We went through the effort of dividing the fiscal years in half to get the years to be calendar years on both charts. For 2018, it was only the information that was up to the end of October of this year. And then the first question that anyone would ask while looking at this is, why don't the number of applications and the revenue, why aren't they more closely correlated? So if you have a high number of applications, why isn't there also a high number, or a high revenue associated with that? And that's because our application fees vary, vary based on the type of work, the scope of work. So adding a garage to a single-family home is going to bring in far less fees than an undeveloped lot that's going to turn into a 10-lot subdivision where all the lots are in close proximity to the wetlands, some of the other larger commercial sites, assisted living facilities, things like that. Larger disturbance brings in more dollars. So it all depends on, there's actually, I would say, two outside factors that are really controlling the applications that we get in and what the scope of the work is. It's the overall economy, how many, how willing people are to invest in projects, and the developable land that's left in town. So years ago, I would say there was more acreage available, and now we're getting to the point where the land that's left is more difficult to develop, so it's taking a little bit longer to work through that process. And again, based on the economy, who's willing to invest money in their homes based on how the overall economy is doing. So I don't think this is a reflection of anything that we are doing well or doing poorly in our department, we're just responding to the demands as they come in.
When were the fees last examined, purposes of appropriateness?
I would say last year, I came, I think it was last year, I came before the selectmen to adjust a fee for a delineation boundary, and at that time, we compared the remainder of our fees to our surrounding towns, as well as other sort of comparable towns, so not just neighbors, but those who are in a similar financial situation as us, and we were on par with those towns. Thank you. And I didn't realize that I would like this chart as much as I thought I would when I was developing it. The two major landowners in town are the town and the state, and clearly the state is Wampatack State Park. There are some days, especially after a major snowstorm or windstorm, where it feels like we have all 5,000 acres, and there are trees everywhere that need to be addressed. But then the good days are when you're driving around and you get to pass people outdoors, parking lots are full, parking lot areas are full, people are outside enjoying the parks, and you're getting good comments on them. So it was, I was pleasantly surprised to see that on the days where it feels like we own everything, this pie chart does show that we own a good portion, we, the town, the commission, owns a good portion of the land. There are other landowners in play here. Nonprofit groups include the trustees, Hingham Land Conservation Trust, and then private here, I have, I think it was primarily Aquarian Water Company that I identified. They're for water protection purposes, but they are, it's protected lands that will not be developed. So it's a different intent, but still qualifies as an open space area in town. So some key initiatives that we're taking on, a few years ago, the town completed its comprehensive trails plan. We are slowly but surely following up on a lot of the recommendations in that plan. We invested in kiosks and distributed those two properties throughout town, those are all installed. I think all of them have maps in them now too, which is great. And just this winter, we started blazing some trails. I'm working with a Girl Scout right now to blaze the trails at Moore Brewer Park. It's going well. It's a great learning process. She is working on the project as part of her Gold Star Award. So it's, it's just been really rewarding for everyone involved. We are also working on finalizing the Open Space and Recreation Plan. That has been conditionally approved by the state. They would like to see some adjustments made. For better or worse, those adjustments fall completely into my lap, so I get to them when I can, and that's why we're a little bit behind on having that formally finalized. We also have some conservation restrictions that are being reviewed by the state and town council. We continue to work on that to get those approved and recorded. And then we're, you know, when opportunities present themselves, we always have an eye out for additional conservation land. There are two properties in front of CPC this year. Those are just the two that came up this year. Should either one of them not go through, then they'll be on the list for future years to try again. And as I mentioned before, it's pretty much my small team, DPW when they have the time, they're a great help to me, they usually come to my rescue when there's a tree down somewhere and I need help immediately to take it down. But another key piece in making our land workable and enjoyable to people is recruiting and coordinating volunteers. A lot of people really enjoy working outside, so it's just a matter of organizing them and giving them an age-appropriate project to work on. I, you know, clearly wouldn't have Cub Scouts working with chainsaws, so it's just a matter of identifying the right project and the right property to get work done. But that's a, that's a really rewarding effort for me as well, to get outside and work with people who care about the lands as much as I do. And then finally, we have probably a two-year effort to really organize and consolidate our office files. For a conservation office, we generate a law of paper, and a lot of it is public record, and so we have limited cabinets to put the stuff in. And we, ahead of the parallel effort that the Board Selectment's Office has started, we worked with the state records to figure out what we could start disposing of, submitted forms, and have been working on that for a good year now, organizing our supplies and materials in the attic, trying to get a lot of that down and be all consolidated in the office. We just want to be self-contained and not, and have the ability to find information when we're looking for it and not feel like it's lost. So that's an ongoing effort that we've made a lot of progress on, and it's largely due to my team and not me at all. So getting to my team, salaries combined for $178,759. There's myself, the really long title, and my secretary, we're both full-time, and then I have two part-time staff in the office as well, a fairly new Assistant Conservation Officer who's working out great, and then a Wetlands Clerk as well. For additional expenses this year, they are higher than the, what they would have been if you pulled out just the conservation spending from the community planning budget last year. I'm asking for an increase for property maintenance. Every year, the bills that come in for property maintenance easily exceed $5,000, and with the land that we continue to acquire, or the higher standards that I would like our land to meet for what's out there, I would like to get out of a sort of creative but responsible, encumbering strategy to try to make it work. I would like to take the stress out of making sure that our properties are open and safe for people to enjoy, and just know that I have the ability to pay the bills to maintain them, especially the popular ones. And then the second piece is a $5,000 item request for consulting services. This is specifically related... This is specifically related to a state-mandated safety inspection for one of our dams. It's due every 10 years, and one of the dams is due for its inspection in FY '20. So that will be a one-time request for FY '20, and then it'll go away for probably eight more years until the other dam comes up for inspection. Then I have one additional request item. The wet, the part-time Wetlands Clerk salary for many years now has been paid out of what's called a Wetlands Account Fund. That is funded by the revenue from, or the fees, the application fees that we receive in the office. As previous slides show, we're showing a decrease in fees, decrease in application and resulting fees. So that account is, has been slowly running out of money to pay the salary. FY ' '20 looks as though it's going to be the first year where it won't have enough money in it to pay the salary for this position. The request for $10,000 is to support just half of the anticipated salary for FY '20. We do expect the Wetlands Account will have enough to pay the other half. This position is the motivating force between, behind our records cleanout and organization. She plays a key role in processing our applications, keeping us on track for commission meetings, tracking expired and soon-to-be-expired permits, getting letters out to those property owners, letting them know that they can apply for something to close out that project, move the paper along. And on a personal note, if it wasn't for this position, then I would be probably the senior-most person in the office at three years, working for the town. So, this position has been in place, and the same individual has worked for the town for many years. And if it's me as the next line of defense at three years, her presence in the office is incredibly helpful, piecing together the history of prior conservation officers, prior projects that I had no experience, that I wasn't there for the permitting, locating files, understanding what happened. She is the historian of the office that keeps us newer staff on track and able to perform as well as we do. She's really valuable on that level, too.
And again, I would just say here that, I'd just point out that, you know, while this is listed as an additional request, if this funding doesn't materialize, we will have to reduce the services
Correct.
within the conservation office. So, so, you know, is it, should it be part of the level services budget? You know, we can sometimes get ourselves tied up in knots about the definitions of level services. I would just make the simple point that if this fund, if this $10,000 goes away, there will be services that your department provides that will have to be, that will have to be reduced.
Absorbed.
And absorbed, yep. And my guess is that given, given what you're doing and things like that, that just means that other things won't get done.
Yeah.
Yep, that's why I recommend. Institutional memory has values.
Incredible value.
Lonnie, was, I was just curious, the picture that you showed on the, was that the Harborman Helping Hingham?
Yes.
I was going to say with, you know, we, I think we're so lucky in this town, you know, Karen talked about the volunteerism. The Hingham High School senior class every year, this will be the third year in a row where there is a day of service. It's called Harborman Helping Hingham. And, and I'd encourage every department, the high school team under their advisor, Ben Lockheim, always does wonderful outreach to say, where can some of our 300 students help and spend the day? I happen to be watching the school committee meeting the other night when this was talked about. This is coming up again.
Yeah, he's already contacted me for 2019.
That'll be a great opportunity.
So, if anyone is out there and needs help,
Yep.
they're great workers, and they're available for the day. So, it's your job to keep them busy.
Yep. I would just also, you know, especially, you know, you talked about the Girl Scout with the Gold Award. I'm aware that here in Hingham, we have, if you look at the, we have a very active boy and girl scout troops, and we have a number of young men and women who are reaching for their Gold Award or their Eagle Scout. And I, you know, we should, we should keep, keep you in mind as, as people are looking for potential projects, because a lot of the youth that get involved in scouting have a real interest in the outdoors. And, you know, Tom, I know sometimes when, when people, they sometimes call our office because they're kind of looking for ideas for a project. So, I think we can, we can, you know, send them Lonnie's way because I think you have some opportunities. I would just also point out that, you know, Lonnie's, Lonnie's got $5,000 in the budget for groundskeeping. And, you know, I think about the Lainer property in particular. Two years ago, we purchased 56 acres of land and preserving Glad Tidings Plain and keeping, keeping that land accessible. I know our office gets calls and requests when conservation land, you know, is, is, you know, starts, starts to get overgrown and people can't, people can't enjoy it. I think that's really important work. And as we're, as we're looking at, as we're looking at purchasing additional open space land, we need to kind of be mindful of some of the ongoing costs. I think, you know, whether it's, whether it's in Lonnie's budget or the DPW, I think we try to absorb and, you know, can you mow this lot, can you mow this field, can you mow that field? There does reach a point where, where we can't absorb it into the budget. And I think we need to be, you know, mindful of that and also understanding that the town, the town committed, the town committed $5 million to purchase the Lainer property, you know, a thousand bucks a year to keep it accessible. I think, you know, compared to the investment, is, is well worth it to maintain it.
Thank you so much for coming in.
I just wanted to underscore something in Lonnie's budget that she kind of glossed over very humbly, but, and it doesn't have quite the visibility that the conservation work that she does has. But, while I did snicker, the GIS work, the Geographic Information Systems work that comes out of Lonnie's office is vital to the, to the work that's done in Town Hall. So, every meeting that we go to, so I said earlier that municipal governments are a service organization. They're a service organization that owns and works with a lot of real estate. And everything, all the development work we do, all of the management work we do with the land that we own, all of that is, is managed and, and in large part, the planning work is done through the GIS tool. And it's a vital component to what we do. She manages it wholly and completely herself. And she does that while being the conservation agent and doing everything else you heard tonight. So, she does it willingly because she loves it, and, and as I did before I got into the role I'm in now. GIS is a, is a very rewarding field, but it's a, it's an important one.
And just to add on that, I would say that the times when I've been exposed to things involving GIS, it is so helpful to have data to use to drive decisions. And I know we've been, you know, the example that to me comes to mind is, as, as we're looking at, you know, fire stations and locations of fire stations and how to, you know, how to look at things, we're, we're able to rely on data. And that data has helped, helped us all in informed decisions.
Absolutely. I mean, we've been using it for years in the planning mission, and it's just enhanced in our understanding of what's before us. So, thank you.
Thanks, Lonnie.
Thanks.
All right. Emily is next. So, also on page roman numeral nine, we can look at Emily Wentworth, our Land Use and Development Director's, formerly zoning administrator.
True.
Yeah.
That sounds really good.
So, Emily's department, what we're laughing about, was Emily's department for years, obviously within the community planning umbrella, was referred in large part to as the zoning office. Well, she and I discussed this at length, and there's a lot more going on out of that department. That's just not descriptive of the mission. So, we decided that through the budget process, to give it a more descriptive, and I feel appropriate name, of land use and development. So, given that long introduction, page nine of the, in roman numeral nine at the beginning of the book, I will summarize her request. So, Emily is requesting in FY 2020, $150,052, which is what I am forwarding as well. And again, Emily's department was under the auspices of the community planning last year, so this is the first year that she has her own budget. So, that said, if we jump forward to page 101, and again, shortly thereafter, is the presentation on page 103. Over to Emily.
Thank you. Okay, so again, as Tom mentioned, we've renamed the department. We understand there'll be a rebranding process to get folks used to it. But, but the intent was really to better capture the, the broad range of responsibilities filled by office staff. Oops, sorry, I apologize. There we are. So, what are those responsibilities? They generally fall into the following categories. We have land use regulation, affordable housing, economic development, and planning. And by integrating these functions, we hope to achieve balanced, responsible, and sustainable growth that both reflects and enhances the character of the community. In terms of the who and how, we have both administrative and professional staff available in the department to provide zoning, land use, housing information to the general public. So, for many constituents, their interaction with office staff may be the first time they've navigated a permitting process or applied for a first-time homeownership opportunity. And we recognize that the material that's familiar to us, because we work with it on a day-to-day basis, may be very complicated and dense for someone that's new to it. So, for that reason, department staff is really highly customer service-oriented. We work hard to present information consistently to people in a friendly, straightforward manner. Staff also provides technical support to town agencies. So, we'll look at the players that we provide that to in more detail on the next slide. But in general, technical support involves research, analysis, and interpretation of land use or other regulations that ultimately forms the basis of professional recommendations for action to various permitting or policy agencies in the town. So, bear with me on this slide. The main, the use of main functions, again, I'll describe each in a little detail, and then identify the partners and players that we work with in each category. If we start in the upper-left-hand piece of the pie or quadrant, that's land use regulation, which is really the core or main focus of the department. It will continue to be. It's, it's really, we primarily provide support to the Zoning Board of Appeals, or ZBA, in the administration of its permitting responsibilities under the Zoning Act, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A, and the Hingham Zoning Bylaw. So, those permits may relate to use. So, for instance, a shopping center development, or a commercial residential building in the downtown, a two-family conversion in a residential neighborhood requires a special permit from the zoning board. Or, it could relate to dimensions, the form of the development, or the intensity or massing of structures. Again, those, those could be permitted either through a special permit or a variance from, from the zoning board. The administrative staff in the department ensures that the board meets all its statutory requirements in a timely manner. So, that includes sending a butters notices, posting legal ads, tracking filing deadlines for all zoning applications. The ZBA also happens to be the only town agency entitled to issue comprehensive permits under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40B. 40B is a state statute that allows developers to seek a single local permit under flexible rules for housing developments, where at least 20% to 25% of the units will have a long-term affordability restriction. These applications tend to be more complex than others, because the board has to review them through other, the lens that other boards typically look at development. So, the zoning board for a 40B application is acting in the place of the Planning Board or the Conservation Commissioner or the Board of Health. And as a result, the board and its staff, our department, has to coordinate very closely with and partner with those agencies so that the zoning board can, you know, protect the public interest. We also support the board in development of proposed zoning amendments for consideration at annual town meeting. These usually are generated through some land use trend that becomes apparent through their review of a typical application, as opposed to a more, it tends to be a little more reactive than proactive because of their role. Whether a permit is issued under 40A or 40B, staff responsibilities don't end with the filing of a decision issued by the board. The department reviews proposed site plans and as-built plans filed with the Building Department to ensure that what ultimately gets built is consistent with what they approved. And finally, we play a supportive role in administering FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program or flood plan regulations, along with the Building Commissioner and the Conservation Commission. So, working our way clockwise. The department also plays a role in affordable housing. These responsibilities seem to be a natural outgrowth of the zoning board's role in permitting affordable housing development. Initially, it, it was a little bit of a limited role, where staff was maintaining the subsidized housing inventory by submitting new housing units to the Department of Housing and Community Development, who really maintains each community's subsidized housing inventory, if a unit was eligible for inclusion, and then monitoring it to make sure that those units continue to meet the performance deadlines established under the 40B regulations. The department also monitored affordable housing projects for compliance with comprehensive permit decisions issued by the board. Those tend also to be performance-driven, tied to a building permit or an occupancy permit. There are deed and regulatory restrictions attached to affordable housing development, on the other hand, that require ongoing monitoring. So, the department, together with town council, your office, will work on these transactions like refinances or resales to ensure that those restriction, that, that the property owners complying with their restrictions. We do that alongside a monitoring or a lottery agent, which could be the Hingham Housing Authority, the Department of Housing and Community Development, CHAPA, or a third-party firm. It depends on the project. These base housing functions have been expanded a bit in recent years, so that the department now provides supplemental support to the Affordable Housing Trust and manages certain affordable housing planning initiatives. So, next, again, working clockwise, economic development. Department staff is available to provide support, including research and analysis, to, for instance, the South Hingham Study Group, which you're quite familiar with, or the Hingham Development and Industrial Commission. We also helped coordinate pre-application reviews of proposed development plans with other internal departments to ensure that permitting processes are as transparent and as efficient as possible for property owners and all other stakeholders. And then, finally, in terms of planning, the department's involved in a number of public planning initiatives that relate to those preceding categories. These include the South Hingham Study Group final report from last November, which highlights opportunities and challenges facing future economic development within the office and industrial parks in South Hingham. This afternoon, the department received responses to a request for quotes issued by the Affordable Housing Trust to develop a housing plan. The trust anticipates that the plan would be complete by next September, September of 2019. So, that's another planning project we'll be working on that we hope will tie in nicely with some of the master plan work that's going to be, that Mary will be getting responses to shortly. Also related to housing, staff worked on the local update census addresses, or LUCA, project alongside the Building Department, the Town Clerk, the Conservation GIS Senior Planner. We were tracking housing development closely so that we can anticipate impacts on our subsidized housing inventory and then adjust plans as needed. And then, we also routinely work in an advisory capacity on public infrastructure projects coordinated primarily through the Engineering Department. So, thank you for bearing with me. In terms of metrics, the graph on the right's intended to show the volume of regulatory work processed through the office over the past five calendar years. There's some fluctuation in the number of applications received, but the trend line is generally positive. As you can see on the left, some of our averages, the ZBA received, on average, 65 applications per year. Those applications tend to be heard over the course of 100 hearings, on average per year. The reason the board conducts more hearings than applications is in part because of the complexity of some of the applications it gets. For instance, the Riverstone development required 19 separate sessions over more than two years. And conversely, like a typical variance for an addition and a setback probably would only require one, one session. Housing metrics, the numbers really speak for themselves. The department reviewed on some level more than 600 new housing units. The department reviewed on some level more than 600 new housing units over the past five years. As a result, DHCD has certified that the town achieved and surpassed its statutory minima, or an uncontested 10% on the subsidized housing inventory.
Congratulations.
Yeah, well, congratulations to the town, yes. So key initiatives, I've mentioned some of these already, I'll just breeze through them potentially. We're going to continue to monitor housing or projects, any project approved by the zoning board, but particularly the 40B developments, which tend to have more conditional, conditions of approval attached to them. We heard one earlier, the Bear Cove Park, that may we'll check into in the morning. So these include the Broadstone Bear Cove Project at 230 Beale Street, that's on the upper right of the slide, and the Avalon Residences at the Hingham Shipyard on the bottom. Previously mentioned, the next two initiatives, we hope to build on the efforts of the South Hingham Study Group, and the department will also be managing the housing plan on behalf of the Housing Trust. LUCA, there's going to be another round of that. Next summer, the town will have an opportunity to review census addresses for accuracy, so, you know, the accuracy is really important, again, for general planning purposes, but also because it affects the subsidized housing inventory. The number of year-round housing units reported on the 2020 census will become the denominator in our subsidized housing inventory calculation, so we just want to make sure that that's right. Green communities, I heard the selectmen's presentation from last week, and I know Michelle had mentioned the applications, you're familiar with it. The department had worked in the background to facilitate some of our responses in the application, but also work to ensure that we continue to comply with our expedited permitting and as-of-right citing requirements, so as to not jeopardize our anticipated designation as a green community. And then we're going to continue to work to improve our application processes, to make permitting as efficient as possible, that is, you know, for both staff and for customers. And finally, as in years past, staff is going to focus on professional development opportunities offered either internally by the town or externally by planning associations and others so that we continue to provide the highest level of customer service and technical support possible. So the real reason we're here, as Tom mentioned, the department's requesting a total of approximately $150,000, majority of which would be dedicated to salaries, about 95%. The department is currently budgeted for two full-time positions, the Senior Planner and an Administrative Assistant, so the proposed budget, if approved, would maintain this level of staff support for fiscal year 2020. In terms of proposed expenses, the majority is dedicated to items that the board is statutorily required to provide, including mailing of a butters' notices and posting of legal advertisements, so unfortunately, we don't have much flexibility with those.
So, you know, as Emily was going through and going through the wheel, the chart with the wheel, and talking about her team, I think it's, I appreciate the way you did this because as you, as you were listening to all of it and you're looking at all this work, and then you come and say, "There are two people that are doing all this work," I don't know how you do it, because, and you do it very, very well. I would just point out two things. The first one is, if I, again, if I look at your wheel chart, I would say that sometimes when you have intensity of hearings or applications, some of the economic development and long-range planning, I imagine, Emily, sometimes, you know, the urgent crowds out the important. And I think for the town, there's an expectation that we devote time to looking ahead. We hear that in a lot of different ways, and I look forward to being able to, I know some of the time-intensive activities associated with some of the 40B permitting, I look forward to the potential that, that now that, you know, those, those activities will get, get more focused. I would also point out that, you know, this is the permitting activity, when you think about 107 hearings and 33 meetings, we need to remember that, you know, for, for the staff, you know, when you think about a meeting, for every one hour of a meeting, there's usually a couple hours of prep. And, you know, Emily has, you know, we're all bound by open meetings, so there's posting the agenda, there's taking the minutes, but because a lot of the zoning, the ZBA's decisions are legal decisions, the requirements for you of getting, making sure everybody's duly noticed, giving all the meeting prep, all of the materials that have to be put together, there's, you know, you think about 33 meetings, there's a lot of time and effort in preparation for the meeting, engaging in the meeting, and then appropriately documenting the meeting, which is necessary because some of the ZBA's decisions could be challenged in court. That's a boatload of work. And I would just close by saying that, you know, as I think back on the time when I've been privileged to serve on this board, I think the, the thing that I am the most proud of right now is that, is that SHI percentage that's above 10%, and I, I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for the very substantial role that you played in, in helping the town achieve that. And I would also thank you for all of the great work that you and the ZBA did on the Riverstone project. That was difficult, and I, what I've been hearing from many of the citizens who were very actively engaged in that project consistently was the responsiveness, the professionalism, and the dedication of, of the ZBA and of you in, in navigating a very tricky thing. So I, I thank you for your efforts on that as well.
She said about everything I really could say.
Sorry.
Although I would echo it, and, you know, I have to say that, you know, I recognize all the acronyms on your chart, and I really enjoyed that, and the explanation is very clear, very complete and thorough. I really enjoyed working with you on the South Hingham Study Group. I thought that was an excellent effort, and I thought that you, you kept it together beautifully. And I think that going forward, I'm hoping it's used as a planning tool. I think you pointed out the different roles that this department, that...
Leanne, you said development? We're open to...
You can make it a new acronym, a new acronym.
Yeah, I've been doing ZBA for 25 years. If I'm a little slow on that, forgive me, but...
Lud.
Thanks for all the good work you do.
Or dol, yeah, no. Thank you.
All right. All right. Last but not least...
Planning Board.
Hi, Mary.
Hi.
Welcome, Mary.
Hi, Mary.
Hello.
So Mary Savage Dunham has been here before, unlike the others. Her budget is on page, summarized on page nine, Roman numeral nine. Mary is requesting $177,997, and I've been looking forward to this one, that's a negative of $653,000. Lowering her budget by 78%, but obviously for the reasons previously stated. So, Mary's, Mary's obviously been here for some time. She was running the Community Planning Organization for several years. I've asked her to, to help us with her expertise by, by helping to guide us through the long-range planning efforts, and by doing, by requesting that, I wanted to relieve her of some of the other responsibilities that she had been undertaking for several years, and that was the reason for the impetus behind the change. So, with that said, I'm going to ask Mary to walk us through her presentation, which begins on their budget on page 93 in her presentation, which stays in witness both shortly after. I'll never know what page, uh, let's see, page 97, 96.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. So one of the main things that the Community Planning Department does is to support the Planning Board. The Planning Board, right now, is meeting two to three times a month. Last year, you might recall, we were meeting two to three times a week. We're very pleased that we're not doing that this year, but it does fluctuate, obviously, depending on what's before the board. The Planning Board manages special permits, site plan review, scenic road applications, and subdivision applications. They're also involved in managing the process for master plan updates, that's something that's typically done every 10 years. The last full master plan update in Hingham was 2001. We've had some interim efforts, and of course, several ancillary planning efforts, but there hasn't been a full update since 2001. That is a priority for the Planning Board. We have issued an RFP, and we're working with Tom and Michelle, and our hope is that the Planning Board could bring forward an article and seek funding for a full master plan update. The feeling on the board that's been expressed is that the community has changed a great deal since 2001, just with regard to the market, the trends, what the townspeople want, what is the vision, and the master plan is really a umbrella kind of guidance document to help support all the decisions that the town makes and really bring everything together. So that's a fairly big initiative. We're just at the start of trying to get a handle on the cost of that, so you'll be hearing more about it in the future. We also conduct studies and prepare plans. We work on drafting and making recommendations for subdivision regulation changes. We did make a change last year, we're currently working on another change. The current subdivision changes for the regulations this year are related to the MS4 permitting that DPW is responsible for. We're trying to do our part to support their effort and make sure that we're really up to snuff with the way that we're regulating everything consistently, whether it's a site plan or a subdivision. We also do work on submitting amendments to the zoning bylaw. We would like to say that we're really proactive, but it seems as though we've been reactive as well with regard to responding to, for example, recreational marijuana. Sometimes topics come along and it just brings it right to our attention that our regulations may not be prepared to handle the challenge that might face the community, and then we have to gear up and tackle that. When we're not supporting the Planning Board, we're working in the office or in the field to provide support to developers, customers, property owners. We're really engaged, just like everybody else on the second floor, from, you know, when the project is just a thought to, you know, after the certificate of occupancy, finishing up the paperwork. And one point that I'd like to stress is that, you know, customers may see us at meetings and supporting our boards, but one successful project requires a great deal of inspections and multiple team members involved in it, board members, office staff, field staff, so there's a lot of work that goes involved, gets into all of these projects. We're just now becoming more involved in tracking stormwater management requirements. It's another fairly unfunded mandate, it's predominantly DPW's responsibility, but we are working with DPW because, of course, we're involved with some aspects of the paperwork with the developments. We're trying to figure out ways that we can actually just build in systems so that when the required paperwork that the Planning Board might condition or require comes in, we're going to try and, and we're still, it's a work in progress, but we're trying to set up a framework so that when it comes in, we save it efficiently, perhaps on the common drive, then when Randy gets audited, he's able to just go and capture the data instead of having every audit become such a burden. And we're all learning as we go with some of this. Some of these requirements are fairly complex and onerous, so we're, we're working on that. So we thought about metrics, and a lot of what the Planning Department does is a little more nebulous, so we have metrics up here about the types of permits that we handled in fiscal '18, 27 site plan reviews, 14 special permit eight threes, 10 zoning articles, seven subdivision applications, some fore-made plans, no scenic road applications last year. The interesting thing is that, you know, one subdivision, we could be working on for multiple, multiple meetings. Not all subdivisions are created alike, some are very complex, and as the town becomes more and more developed, the land that isn't developed, isn't developed for a reason, and it's typically constrained or challenged, there's concerns, issues, obstacles, but the market pressure is high, the will to develop is high, and so it's how do you navigate that? So, we do.
There's a lot of, a lot of complexity behind all those numbers.
Well, I always say, you know, what do we get the most complaints about? Water, drainage, and the more developed that we get, that's, you know, you spend a lot of time talking about drainage, or my board would say that I spend a lot of time talking about gravel, but drainage and gravel, we talk about it a lot. Water is a tricky thing, and so we handle a lot of customer complaints about that. So looking forward...
Question before you continue?
Sure.
Have you modified the sub-base requirement of two feet?
We did reduce it for the smallest residential roadway down to 12 inches, and we did change the lifts from four six-inch lifts to three eight-inch lifts for the other roadways. We did look at reducing it for the roads that were to be accepted. We didn't do that yet. We are doing another regulation revision right now where we could think about that, but the lowest subdivision roadway are roadways that the town would never accept, and typically a homeowners association maintains them. We could take that under advisement.
What was the rationale with the lift modification?
It's just the equipment right now can handle that, that's kind of industry practice, it's, the compaction can be obtained, and that's how it's done.
I'm not suggesting you should reduce that requirement in any way.
So looking forward, I did mention the comprehensive master plan update. We've issued an RFP, we're soliciting quotes, and you may hear more about that moving forward. We feel that having a comprehensive analysis to support decisions, build-out is very important. Subdivision...
Do you have a few questions about that?
Sure.
Do you envision having a citizen-appointed committee working on the master plan if such a thing were to pass?
Well, it's not my, so me, it's not my decision, it would be town meeting. There has been discussion about a master plan committee, and I suspect that if an article were to move forward requesting funding for a master plan, perhaps it'd be a companion article asking for appointment of a committee. That's not, that's a decision beyond me, but I think the most effective way to manage a project like that would be to have a committee with somebody from the responsible different boards and committees, Board of Health, zoning board, selectmen, water supply, zoning, planning, conservation, and really getting a steering group to guide the process, so that if I were, that's, that would be my opinion.
One thing that, as, as you and the Planning Board are, are looking at potentially doing that, and, you know, mindful that Warren articles are kind of around the corner, one thing that I often find is so helpful is to look back on, what did we do the last time we did this?
I can tell you that was...
And, and, you know, in terms of looking at the Warren article, looking at the comment to see what was, you know, how was it implemented, I often find on many things, it's just, it's a helpful starting point for thinking about it, and...
We had, we've got $90,000, selectmen okayed $90,000. I was on the Planning Board at the time, this was 19 years ago-ish, and it was a committee at large, different people, and we spent two years on it. And the... And the, the final product was interesting because our, our big concern at the time, ladies and gentlemen, was the train down in the square that was still active and live and being litigated, and Lyndon Ponce was Erickson. And it wasn't even really a blip on the screen. It was in its early germination stage, and South Hingham was there, but it, it wasn't looming large. So you're right, as the town changes, so do the needs. So it's time. They've got a ten to fifteen year lifespan anyways, so.
Yeah, I think one thing that I'm mindful of is that most committees for projects like that, I think maybe a year and a half, two-year commitment. It needs to be a efficient, well-managed, succinct process, and I think there also has to be a commitment to having it be something that can be implemented, because planning is great, but if you don't actually walk out of it with goals and objection, objectives and active action steps, excuse me, what's the point?
True.
And so it has to be like a living document, and I think that that's the trend. That's our hope. We've seen a great deal of pressure within the community, for example, on our historic resources. Development pressure is high. People want to come to Hingham. Why do they want to come to Hingham? Because it's Hingham, it's a desirable community, it's got great character. But it's the very thing that's drawing people here is suffering because of all the pressure from development. So how do we manage all the different trends and still support the vision and the type of community that the residents want? And that's part of, I mean, it's not easy, but that's part of the conversation to be had, is what do the residents want?
We had a visioning session at the outset of it, and it was well-attended, so we got some good input from the public, which was used, kind of crafting the direction we took. That was my memory.
So as I always, as I already mentioned, we're working internally on the MS4-related workflow. We're trying to utilize technology as much as possible, so our hope is to set up the framework and then just build it into our procedures. We're really trying to migrate our product, as well as our files, to the common drives so that other departments can get it online instead of coming over. We are also trying to combat all of the paper that we have. We're trying to scan our files and get rid of material, but we're also just trying to scan our files to increase accessibility. For example, we have our Form A plans. We're scanning those and saving them on the common drive, even if it saves DPW driving across town to do some research. That's a little efficiency that we can give them. So we feel that we have a lot of customers. Everybody's our customer, external but also internal, so ways that we can make the information we have easily accessible to our colleagues is important. A big project that's going right on right now is the Canterbury subdivision. I didn't speak about it very much, but some of these subdivisions and projects, we're out in the field. We're looking at the permits, when they apply for permits, to see if that matches what the planning board approved. But then when they're out in the field, cutting down the trees, we're making sure that they're adhering to their limits of clearing, are, you know, they blasting too much? Are they preserving what they're supposed to preserve? Is the drainage being built properly? And those things cycle, and they can be time-consuming, but it's well worth it if you can capture challenges early on. And some of the changes that the planning board made to their subdivision regs last year, one of them, which I think was one of the best, was to put in requirements for interim as builds during development. So let's find out before you pave the road if the utility trench is accurate, and it would seem like common sense as we're sitting here talking about it, but it's, it's those things that sound like common sense that aren't actually in black and white. We're trying to build those into the regulations and improve our processes, so we're very proud about those changes.
Do you require an engineer to be on-site on those more difficult-to-construe subdivisions?
Not for the entirety of the project, but for certain junctures of it. And with our recent regulation update, we did increase what needed to be witnessed, you know, by our peer review engineer. But it is, you know, we're also sensitive to trying not to overburden the developers and try to have what's required not be onerous. Not all projects are alike. So if the planning board felt that a project, for example, required supplemental scrutiny with the installation of a drainage system, they could place a condition, and some projects may indicate that, but not all projects do. So we're trying to balance that.
Are the Civ tests witnessed?
Are the what?
Civ tests witnessed?
Um, yes, but some people are resistant to doing them, but yes, we do, we just did some down on Abington Street, actually. The collection of the material, then it shipped out. That was for a site plan, though.
Are the site plans that you've listed in conjunction with special permits, or are they standalones?
Some are and some aren't, interestingly. You know, we're finding that site plans, standalone site plans, are being triggered just by construction, even just a large, single-family house, redevelop, like demo and rebuild, get triggered, greater than twenty thousand square feet of disturbance. Frequently, people don't even realize, you know, projects sometimes start out small and then they expand, and next thing you know, you have a great big project, and sometimes site plans find their way to us that way as well. So our budget is salaries and expenses. Salaries, one fifty-six, two ninety-two, and expenses, twenty-one, seven oh five, which is a decrease. Thank you, Tom. And our major items include consultant services. We've used that funding in the past to either create or modify GIS data. We've done regulation review. We've done traffic reports and studies. We've funded some online permitting efforts, so really a variety of different things, and not all of those things are forecasted ahead of time. It's very helpful to be able to respond and meet the needs when we can. Other things that we have are more mundane, office supplies, meetings, seminars, dues, postage. We are moving towards doing more online and trying to reduce our postage. The planning board isn't reducing the number of meetings that they're having, but what we're trying to do is post our meeting information online, and the board members now go and look at that under the Applications Pending part of our webpage, and I very rarely will mail out a packet to them, which is helpful for office productivity. But also, I think it gets them the information faster, and it also is available to the public, so everybody has the benefit at the same time.
Thank you so much.
Mary, I just, you know, I just want to especially say thank you for all of the great work that, that you in particular did around the recreational marijuana. You know, it was a year ago at this time that, that there was a lot of uncertainty, and how do we construct Warren articles, and what's the path? And it was a bit of a moving target. The state regs came out as a draft, then other things came out. It was a complicated subject. There were a lot of moving parts, and I appreciated your getting everybody the information on a timely basis, but, and more importantly, what I particularly appreciated was that, you know, you'd, you'd get this packet of, you know, fifty or sixty pages of stuff, and, and right up front, you'd say, here's what it is, here's what matters, here's what's different, and for someone who doesn't, doesn't have as much experience operating in that world, you took a very complicated subject and made it accessible for me, and, and that made it easier for me to do my job, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you, but many people contributed, so-
Absolutely, and we, we, we appreciate everybody's work, and certainly you're an important part of that team, so while you're here tonight, I want to acknowledge the great work.
Thank you.
Is the other part of that significant effort at last year's town meeting been addressed or passed on by the AG?
It has been, and in fact, your zoning bylaw should be going to print. We're just, we just got the, we were holding up the printing of the bylaw till we got that. We did get that. We just got in the second bound sample. The first one had some irregularities, so we, we now just got the second one in, and we just want to give it one last proofreading, and then we'll be distributing those, so-
Good to go?
I'm hopeful, yes.
Terrific.
Good. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Good job.
I'm going to wait for that.
Sure, why don't you? Just give us a thumbnail sketch of what you'd like us to do on that.
So the other request that we have in front of you relates to zoning article CC, rezoned conservation land as official and open space. So you'll recall, last week, the planning board sent up five zoning articles, and Real Estate Council has suggested that there might be a more concise format to the verbiage. It's really format, not substance. So instead of listing each cluster of lands to be rezoned as separate items, it's really consolidating them from the type of zoning district that they're in, whether it be Residence A, B, C, or partial zoning. So we considered this, we being the planning board, last night at their meeting. We reviewed the revised format. We made one change to it and modified the language suggested by council to add three words in the last sentence from that zone. Last night, the planning board then reviewed and approved the change in the format, not the substance, of zoning article CC, rezoned parcels to official and open space. They also requested the Selectmen approve for insertion into the warrant the revised form of the zoning article, which I attached for you. It's slightly different than what you had emailed in place of the original form of zoning article CC.
Entertained a motion to approve for insertion into the two thousand nineteen warrant a revised form of zoning article CC in place of the original form of zoning article CC, previously submitted by the planning board on November twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you.
Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
All right, ladies, thank you. Selecting the planning function, second floor is good hands.
So I just wanted to re, just mention one other quick thing, if you don't mind. So we heard from three key components to the second-floor staff. I just wanted to highlight that, you know, we, we hear every year about the legal budget and what it's, and what it's doing. A lot of support that those three departments are, are performing is, is done in large part with assistance from our land use attorney, Susan Murphy. So I just wanted to point that out. And the last thing I would state is that on, I hope the AdCom is excited because we just finished our full general government category here on December fourth.
Let's speak of that. Entertained a motion with respect to Dane Torpey's representation of A W Perry in unrelated matters, that the board waive any conflict of interest under the rules of professional conduct and make a determination on the conflict of interest law that the financial interest of Susan C. Murphy is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the municipality may expect from the employee.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
All right, that brings us to the meeting moments of the December fourth meeting. And we shall proceed around the table. Michelle, is there anything you'd like to add before we say goodnight?
No, thank you.
Thomas.
No, thank you, I'm good.
I know we're meeting on, on Thursday night, but, you know, for people who regularly tune in, I would just remind everybody that Christmas in the Square is this weekend, starting Friday, December seventh, carrying over. A wonderful celebration. I had the opportunity to attend Miracle on Main Street at the Heritage Museum last week, which is a fundraiser to raise, to raise money for many of the aspects of Christmas in the Square that, that the citizens of Hingham enjoy, the hayrides, the lights on the poles. I'd like to give a special shout-out to Lynn Barclay, who is the head of the Hingham Downtown Association. Appreciation to all the merchants who were donating items to be fundraised. I, I, I'm just constantly reminded that, that we have local merchants in, in our community. Many of them are our friends and neighbors, and they are generous to this community in, in so many different ways, so I would, I would ask, as we're entering into this holiday season, that we remember those merchants as we do things. And I, I would just say, in closing, Paul, you know, as we look through, as we, as we walk through all these budgets, I, I think in this community, and I'm speaking as a resident, we are so fortunate to have the dedicated, experienced, professional, respectful staff. These budgets are well-thought-out. We have such dedicated people that work for this community. You know, Mary was talking about customers. Every, everybody who works for this town views the residents of Hingham as their customers, and I, I, I find myself being very proud of the people who work here and of, of the efforts that, that they all put forth to help create this wonderful community. This is, it's a good Hingham night.
I'd agree. I think what you witnessed tonight, ladies and gentlemen, is that the department has it came before you spend your tax dollars very carefully, and they have good, solid explanations for the reasons behind the steps that they take. They work together well as a team. I'm very, very grateful for that. You know, and perhaps on a more awkward subject, we had, we had a structure at fifty-eight Main Street come down this week, and I anticipate saying something more substantively at, at a later time in the very near future, but that gave me no pleasure to see. On a final note, I had the great pleasure of going to a ship commissioning this Saturday and sitting with Senior Chief German and his wife Lisa and Mr. John Asher. We saw the commissioning of the USS Thomas Hudner. And, you know, the collective gatherings of Americans to see a ship of war formally going live into the United States Navy is something that I, I think everybody, if they ever get an opportunity to witness it and participate in, should avail themselves of. Took a tour on ship afterwards, and, you know, that crew comes from all over this country. It really is just a, a great gathering of Americans and just makes you feel really, really good. So anyways, on that note, we're going to be back Thursday night doing the same thing with different budgets, so Tom and Michelle are doing yeoman's work, keeping, you know, the ship on course and keeping our schedule, you know, time. We've got a lot of work that, you know, is coming down the pipe very shortly, so we want to make sure that the budgets get the kind of attention they deserve and, and need with respect to our oversight and input. So stay tuned and, you know, let us know if you think we're missing something. On that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, alls in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.